Go ahead and start then. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to welcome you to our Planning Commission meeting this evening. This is Planning Commission meeting for February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting is being recorded. We're gonna begin the meeting with a prayer by Commissioner Showers and then a pledge by Commissioner Marchbanks.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this day. We're thankful to be able to be in this meeting today. We're grateful for our beautiful community. We're thankful for the beautiful snow that is all around us. We pray for our efforts tonight, that we can understand the issues and make the right decisions for our community. We're grateful for the awesome staff that we have in our city and pray for their abilities to do their jobs, especially our law enforcement as well, that keep us safe. Father, we're thankful for all of our many blessings and again ask thy presence to be here in this meeting in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I'll rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna begin our meeting this evening with an audible roll call of Commissioners. Sharon Cole here, Mike Marchbanks.
Here.
Jerry Showers.
Here.
Rob Callis hasn't arrived. Steve Johnson is absent tonight. Scott Thompson is online with us. Renee Tribe.
Here.
Here.
Renee Tribe, okay. We're gonna go ahead. The next item on our agenda is an approval of the minutes. These are the minutes from January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. And Commissioners have received those ahead of time, had a chance to review those. And I didn't see any corrections. Anyone else? Okay. Do have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor? A second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The voting is unanimous. I've gotta make sure I include Scott up there.
Hello, sorry.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a time for public comment. This would be for any items not already on the agenda for this evening. Is there anyone here for that purpose? Okay, item number four. This is a minor subdivision approval for Murnan Estates, Platte A, six, let's see, six ninety north, two hundred east. Our applicant is Paul and April Murnan. Is that you, sir? If you'd like to come up to the front, there should be a place for you to sign in there.
Right here.
Uh huh. You can go ahead and have a chair there. And our presenting staff is Mary Barnes. Okay, if you want to go ahead.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Cole. So like Commissioner Cole said, this applicant, this application is for minor subdivision approval for a two-lot minor subdivision located at six ninety north, two hundred east. The applicant, Paul Murnan, is proposing to subdivide a one point thirty-three acre parcel into a typical lot and a flag lot. I just wanna say, I accidentally uploaded the one that had my measurements on here, so these red measurements aren't on the actual plat, but they do show the correct measurements that I put in the staff report, so that's handy. Anyways, there is an existing home on this typical lot out front, Lot One, and the purpose for this new flag lot, Lot Two, would be to build a new residential home. With the lot size requirements, the minimum lot size required in this area is twenty thousand square feet. Lot One will be twenty-two thousand five hundred and ninety-eight square feet and Lot Two will be thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eight square feet. Both lots meet width, depth, and frontage requirements. Also, both lots meet subdivision requirements, including the required public utility easements along all boundary lines. The applicant will be putting in the required public improvements along two hundred east as well. As seen, this is the cross-section for that. The Planning Commission is the final land use authority on minor subdivisions, so with that, we do, staff recommends minor subdivision approval for Murnan Estates, Platte A, with the conditions found in your staff report. Any questions?
Where is the? Go ahead.
Just one thing to add on that. So we don't include the lane in the, like, it's included in the overall thirty-two thousand square feet, but the lane doesn't count towards the minimum lot size of twenty, so that back portion of, you know, the triangle portion of the lot is over twenty thousand square feet.
So, show me, and I should be able to tell, but where is the road that goes for that to the flag lot?
So, that's right here.
Right there.
That's, well, there's no road there quite yet, of course. That's still need, there's all these trees in the way.
Yeah.
Right now. Here, I'll zoom in a little.
I looked at it, and that's what I, where I thought it would be.
Uh huh, yeah, so it'll come all the way back here and this long triangle area will be that building lot.
Okay. And, and will you retain the home that was built in nineteen oh three also?
Uh, the plan is to sell the back lot and then get rid of the house that's existing on it.
And, and build a new home there or?
Sir, we have to speak in there.
Oh. Uh, the, the initial plan is to sell the back lot and then with the proceeds, remove the home and then sell that portion.
Okay.
The whole is old.
So sell it as an empty lot, is that what you're saying? The front, the front lot?
Yes.
Take the house down and then just sell it as an empty lot?
Or you just sell both parcels, or both lots?
Yeah, I'm gonna, that's the intent, yes.
Okay. And you own, do you own both lots right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you living in the front house?
Yes.
Okay.
You recall who, whose house that was before you, prior to you?
Yeah, it was Ruby Friar.
Oh, okay. I wondered if that was the Friar home.
Yeah, her son Reese was my wife's stepfather.
Oh, okay.
And she acquired it from.
I, I was trying to orient myself, but I wondered if that was the old Friar home.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, as I look through this, I, I, I don't see any problems with it. I, I think it's pretty straightforward as far as the flag lot and. Yes, uh huh. Go ahead, Scott.
Um, yeah, I talked to both of the neighbors in the south. It would be effective. They are completely unopposed. They had no problem with it at all.
Okay, that's great information.
They're probably excited.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, this isn't a public hearing, but we would welcome.
We live directly north.
We live behind it.
She'll open that up in just a minute.
Okay, yeah, let us get through this presentation and then we would be happy to hear from you. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Murnan or for staff? To me, it looks like it is, everything is in compliance as far as for code and for the flag lot, all those, all those things that need to be considered. But we would be happy to hear from you folks if you'd give your name.
Village Suzanne Henninger.
Okay.
Sharon.
Uh huh. Yeah, come up here, then, we have people that listen online as well as one of our Commissioners and, and then they can hear. Okay.
So Bill and Suzanne Henninger, and we live two fifty-six east, seven forty north, so directly north of the lot. So, we just really have some questions as opposed to, I mean, a few questions.
Okay.
On the initial, the letter received, it states that the, the existing home will remain and the lot behind will, will be a single-house dwelling, so that is changed from the letter we received, saying it's gonna be two lots now?
So, the reason why I put that on the lot is I was saying that with this subdivision there, I just, it was meant to just be the, with the subdivision, the house is there and then there's going to be a new house in the back. But of course, it's up to Mr. Murnan what he does with his private property.
Okay. Is, will it still be just two single-house dwellings, not like an apartment or something like that?
No, that's how it's zoned.
Okay.
In that area.
Okay.
So.
What is the access to the flag lot? Where would the access be?
Um, that was one of the questions where I asked. It'll come off two hundred east and, and down that side.
So there is, you know, there is the connect.
The Carters, you know where your neighbors, the Carters, live?
Yes.
Yeah, it'd be right on the north side of them.
So on the north side, so not on the, I mean, on the south side, not the north side?
There'll, there'll be a thirty-foot lane that goes.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's, I mean, the way it stands now, there's not a lot of space there, but, yeah, I guess, all right. So it'll not be along.
And they indicated, you know, some of the trees and that would have to be taken care of.
Yes, okay. So along the canal side, there would be nothing there then? It'd just be, there's not an access road along the north side then?
No.
Okay, all right.
Do you have other questions?
Well, that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, you're, you're neighbors.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think people should be able to do with their, their land a, as they please, as long as it, it fits within the, the zoning laws, and we're just concerned about like an apartment being put in there mostly.
That's, the zoning in that is.
Not changing the zoning, it's staying R one twenty, so.
Okay.
Yeah, no, they're just intending to have two residential lots that are, you know, twenty thousand feet.
So they're half acre, or less, I mean.
One's point five two and the other one is point seven five something.
Yeah, they're over that.
Yeah, over that, actually. Okay.
No, there's, they, they can't build anything else in that area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. Okay, any other questions from Commissioners or are we ready for a motion? We're ready.
Ready for a motion, but.
Okay.
Do you want me to make that, can I make that motion? I move to approve the applicant's request for minor subdivision approval located at six ninety north, two hundred east with the following conditions. One, the applicant will continue to work with the city engineer to make all final corrections to the engineering documents in plat. Two, complete or post-inadequate improvement and completion assurance warrant and post-required assurance for all required public infrastructure improvements. Three, prior to plat recording, the applicant will update the final plat Mylar to include notarized signatures of owner's consent to dedication and obtain signatures of all entities indicated on the subdivision plat attached here. Two, four, the plans and plat will meet and be constructed as per applicable specifications as found in the Linden City Development Manual and five, all items of the staff report.
I second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, the voting is unanimous. And thank you so much for coming in and you residents also. Okay, the next item on our agenda, go ahead. Is an amended site plan. This is for complete restoration garage at thirteen forty-two west, two hundred south. Our applicant is Jerry Pinnock, Pinnock? Is that you?
Yep, that's Jerry.
And you've got a friend with you? And your name, sir?
I'm Dan Goodwin, General Manager there at Complete Restoration.
Okay, great. Hi, sorry, I just called you a friend. I just didn't know who you were yet.
I say we're friends too.
Sure. And our presenting staff is Mary Barnes.
All right, thank you.
And if you want to go ahead.
Mm-hmm. So this application is for amended site plan approval for the existing completion restoration site located at thirteen forty-two west, two hundred south. The applicant is proposing to tear down or relocate the existing garage and build a new garage with five thousand eight hundreds, about five thousand eight hundred square feet of storage area. I'll show the floor plan, actually. Storage area and then five thousand, about five thousand nine hundred square feet of recreation area for complete, complete restoration employees. So here's that storage. This is the bottom level storage area and then a pickleball court on this side and then upstairs. Jerry said, hold on, Jerry said it would be most likely also a recreational area about that. Possibly also storage, I'm sure. Anyways, the original site plan for this whole site was approved in two thousand and four by the Planning Commission. So according to city code seventeen point seventeen point one thirty, when a new building replaces an existing structure on the property, it triggers the requirement for the whole lot to come into substantial compliance with city codes. These codes include things like irrigation, ditches, exterior explain, displays and landscaping, et cetera. The complete list is found on your staff report. How, for the most part, these, these requirements are already met on site. However, I'm going to go through just a few of them, specific site development standards such as parking, traffic circulation, landscaping and the design standards. So first, parking. So as you know, parking standards are based on the on the square footage and the different uses in the building. To ensure the entire lot is compliance with parking code, I put in the front office and this new building as well, seen in this little table right here. So with the front office and the new accessory building, storage square footage, thirteen point five, or if you round that up, fourteen parking spaces are required. With just the office square footage in the front office, about six parking spaces are required, therefore, a total of twenty parking spaces are required on the lot and twenty-two have been provided. With thirteen, thirteen in the back, I believe, well, it looks like these are gonna be new, probably new restripped ones. And then these nine existing ones, so that, that clears them up for parking requirements. Traffic circulation, there's plenty of traffic circulation through this site already as seen in this plat. Complete restoration employees are able to access the lot from thirteen eighty west through Lot Two, Three and Four with this access easement. And then there's an existing access easement through the UDOT right-of-way along two hundred south. Landscaping, this lot currently has no landscaping, but to be in substantial compliance with city codes, it must meet the landscaping standards found in the industrial zone. This includes a landscaping strip along the public street frontage with trees and a seventy percent vegetation coverage and a landscaping strip along I fifteen, also with trees. It doesn't have a coverage requirement for that landscaping strip along I fifteen. As seen in the landscaping plan, the applicant has provided a ten-foot wide landscaping strip along I fifteen with five trees planted every thirty feet on center, as asked for in the landscaping code. The landscaping strip along two hundred south has been a main point of discussion during staff's review of this project. I'll pull up this little diagram that I put in. UDOT's right-of-way does run to about forty feet behind the existing curb and gutter. As far as counting records, I looked back on historical parcels and it looks like it's been that way since nineteen eighty-one. To meet the requirement and put a twenty-foot landscaping strip along two hundred south, the applicant would have to apply for an encroachment permit with UDOT, which has, as I'm sure you would imagine, which has always kind of been this very difficult process and UDOT would not allow any trees on the property due to the utilities that are running under that right-of-way. In two thousand and four, I'll come back to the landscaping plan. In two thousand and four, the, the original site plan was approved with a condition of approval stating that if a twenty-foot landscaping strip couldn't be installed due to UDOT or something, then the landscaping along I fifteen should be provided. So the original property owner did plant this entire area, about five thousand square feet with grass, to meet that condition. The grass was pulled out in two thousand and twenty after sixteen years of being maintained. Who knows how many gallons of water. Instead of a twenty-foot landscaping strip, the applicant is proposing to landscape the front ten feet of actual property, so right here is the property line and here is the UDOT right-of-way. So this is ten feet between the property line and that curb and gutter for the parking lot. So they're proposing to landscape that front ten feet, which would include trees, Linden trees, which is kind of fun, and meet coverage requirements. The applicant has also proposed a small fence to clearly delineate that property line and that total square footage of landscaping that would be added to the property with this amended site plan would be two thousand six hundred and sixty-one, up from zero percent right now. I mean, zero square feet. And the landscaping on this property would also be a little bit more water-wise, not a little bit, a lot more water-wise than previous landscaping has been, which is a goal that we're coming up to, coming up with in our general plan. Anyways, industrial design standards require buildings to have a minimum of twenty-five percent brick decorative block, stucco or wood. This building will be sixty-three percent smooth face and split-face block, which meets that requirement. The block is a charcoal gray, I can show you right here, about this color. And then this red roof, it looks pretty bright on this plan, so I asked, I asked the applicant about that and he said that it would, it would be closer to the existing red of the existing, here, the existing building, so it's a little bit more, maybe like an earth-toned red than, than the bright red. And that, that blue and the colored elevations, I checked and that's in the color palette, so that shouldn't be a problem. Oh, and here's the, that original site plan. I put that right at the end. See new building. Oh, and this back building was an existing barn, which tells you how long it's been there as well. Okay. The garage does meet setbacks, obviously. And in conclusion, the addition of this new building, with the addition of this new building, the city has the opportunity to require compliance with certain city codes, which will ensure a better-looking building and site. The landscaping improvements and the new building will be nice to look at for people who are driving through Linden. Hopefully, they will, you know, instead of kind of driving past what is there now, they'll see this beautiful block building with, you know, red and blue, it just will look a lot nicer and there'll be trees, you know. Additionally, with this new building, the applicant will be able to make better use of his property and better serve his employees as well. Any questions?
Well, it sounds like the biggest question is, is the landscaping because they're in compliance with the parking and the traffic circulation and with that landscaping strip, I'm not, I'm not sure how else they would do that, other than try somehow to get UDOT to approve something and then, and then they still couldn't put trees in there.
Yeah, it would still be out of compliance technically.
Yeah, right. And, and it sounds like as long as they make up the total percentage of landscaping, that we have the option of approving them.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so I can, I can mention that really quick, just for anyone who's listening online here in the staff report. Um, one, one of the, here, let me find that. Square footage of a twenty-foot landscaping strip would be, on this property, would be two thousand two hundred and ninety-seven square feet and this will be adding two thousand six hundred and sixty-one square feet. So it will be meeting that previous condition and, I mean, it won't be taking away any of the landscaping square footage that a two hundred, two hundred, sorry, twenty-foot landscaping strip would bring.
To me, it seems like a better way of doing it. I don't know what.
Yeah, instead of having to deal with UDOT.
And it would create that separation, you know, which is, I think, what we're trying to accomplish with the twenty-foot landscaping strip.
Mm-hmm.
What are some of your thoughts?
Doesn't look to me like there's any other way to do it than what they've got planned. I've dealt with UDOT before.
Go ahead, sir.
We started down that route called Mary Back and said, this is.
Like pushing a rope.
There is, if you go back to the front picture, there's a fire hydrant there that with the landscaping and the fire hydrant's on our property, in the sense on that ten-foot
Strip.
Strip. And so I talked to the captain over there, the fire department, and he said he's gonna get back with me. He's gonna talk to the fire marshal and get back with me on a, because we want to put a fence across there, but then there's a fire hydrant and the fire, it has to be very visual, has to be very accessible. And so that is one thing that we'll, you know, work with.
What would, what would your suggestion be on that?
To do like a, like a two-rail picket, so there's easy access or I, I don't know, it's, it's a good question because what, it was all grass when we were there and we were paying up to during the summer, a thousand dollars a month for our, for the grass, to water the grass. And we found out we were watering the neighbor's grass included. But we didn't find that out until we stopped watering and then the grass died.
Plus, it wasn't pressurized irrigation, it was city water.
It was city water.
Yeah.
And so we're like, this is crazy, you know, and, and even managing it, we're still six hundred dollars in, in water when during the winter we're less than a hundred. So it was, so we just stopped that. We thought that was, that was not smart, so we do have trees and landscaping a little bit from the mailbox in, so there is some landscaping on that easement a little bit right there, yeah. There's, there's some there, but with that fire hydrant, I, I don't really have a big solution on what to do with that fire hydrant because we want to make it accessible. The only thing to do is to maybe separate it. Because if we put a bunch of shrubs there and it overgrows, or we put a fence there, then they can't have access to it or see it. So, so anyways, I thought we'd just try and leave it as sparse as we can, so, so, so it's like, Mary did a good job putting, we'll put it between the trees, leave that part as sparse as we can, and I don't know what to do about the fence because we could put just a double picket fence.
Do you want a fence or are we, we're not requiring a fence, are we?
Yeah, that was just, I thought you wanted.
That's what you got, because I don't, I don't know what the purpose of a fence would be anyway.
Well, we were just trying to make sure we delineate what's there, what's not.
Yeah.
The, the other thing is, that looks like our property and so I don't want it to go to, we, we weed it, we do everything. We take care of it because it, it reflects us in our image.
You know what, maybe your idea of a two-rel, something decorative, that's really just a decorative and then leave a break right there where the hydrant is, that would definitely distinguish that, hey, that's not our property, we're not taking care of in front of this boundary. But I think your landscape sends a strong message that you obviously don't.
We spent a lot, a lot of money on it so even right now to this point because we had to pull up the grass, we put down some decorative rock, we put down some, we weed it, we, I mean, we do everything, we, we don't want it to look bad. And so we would still do that, whether we put up a fence or whether we just put up a, you know, different decorative rock and, and didn't put up a fence and just put landscaping there. I mean, we could do that and not put up a fence.
Yeah.
Or put trees, I, I, whatever you guys.
Personally, I wouldn't put a fence, but it'd be your choice.
Well, we were just thinking, we want to make, whatever you guys, I mean, I, I'd rather not have a fence if that's the case. I mean, I, it's just more expense for us.
Right.
We're gonna take care of the property anyway, regardless. We're not gonna let it.
Yeah, and, and because it doesn't border residential, then it, there's not a fencing requirement.
You don't have to do it.
Right, right.
So it would be, because you want your business to. So, it would be, because you want your business to look the way you want it to look and to take a lot of pride in your business.
Right.
I think as long as you're putting that nice strip in, it's going to definitely send the signal where your property begins. And it sounds to me like you're going to continue to keep that from being a nuisance out front. You're going to at least keep it. We, we'd sprayed down and stuff and that's about all a good neighbor can do.
Right. And we, and we added the rock, we added felt so things wouldn't grow through.
Got some expense there and that.
Yeah, yeah. And so, so what do we think as far as no fence and putting down?
Yeah, we, I mean, we don't, yeah.
It's up to you, you tell us what you want to do because it's not required. So, you just tell us what you want to do and we'll.
What if we added some decent shrubbery?
Well, that's what I wondered, if you couldn't kind of do a shrubbery screening there.
Yeah, something like that, some smaller trees and plants and stuff.
Right.
A little hedge, a little, a little curb, curb wall hedge.
It would still give you a screen there.
Mike Dunn, who's from here, he's, he's a fireman and he's a, he owns Thrive Nursery, so I'll ask him.
Yeah, good idea.
And so, here, hey, we want to make this, what, what would you suggest here that's very maintenance-free as far as, you know? Obviously, we're going to still take care of it, but.
Well, he could probably give you some really good ideas on that.
Yeah.
And, I mean, as far as the city's concerned, as long as the landscaping that's required is maintained.
Right.
Then we're okay with that.
Yeah. We've been taking care of it. We, we spend some time until it doesn't look bad.
Yeah, well, we appreciate that.
Well, and then in the back, the other landscaping in the back, we want to put up some trees that don't block our sign in our building.
Right.
So, we're trying to put up some fairly small trees that still look good, that add landscaping, but that don't take away from the, because we're going to put up a big sign, you know, off the freeway or, well, a, a sign on the building.
Yep.
That's really nice that you're, you're constructing, you know, that back, that, that whole back part.
Yeah, that part's better.
You know, that's going to be really nice, that's going to be a real upgrade.
It'll look really good, yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be a fun asset for your employees. How many employees do you have?
About thirty-five.
Wow, that's, that's a good number. So, this current barn or storage building is pretty narrow. So, you're going to tear that down and make it wider, more useful, so you have more use on the bottom and on the top.
Yeah, it's a, it's, right now, it's a hundred by forty. And we're going to go as far as we can, which is a hundred and forty by seventy.
Nice.
Great.
And so, just give us more space to, what we're doing is we've had two or three break-ins down there on our vehicles and problems. And so, we're park, parking our vehicles inside.
Nice.
At least the expensive ones, so they don't steal stuff from them. And, and so, we're going to do that. And so, the parking will just be for the employees on the outside. And they'll park the company vehicles on the inside and then they'll switch them, switch it off, so.
Do you get very many customers coming to your, I wouldn't think you would.
No.
Yeah.
Parking's mostly for employees, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. We don't get, maybe one person pulls in to pay a bill at the time.
That's fun, add a pickleball court and some other amenities, that's great.
Yeah, yeah, just, and it's mostly for Melissa, so.
Yeah, I was thinking it's for your wife, that's a good idea. You're a smart man.
Do either of you have more questions? Okay, and it looks like, yeah, the conditions are mostly just following through on engineering and warrants posted and, and assurance and recording and the plans are meeting the development manual. So, it looks like.
IMS right here in Linden, they're doing the block, very good company.
Yes, keeping it local.
Yeah, we're keeping it local, so it's good, it's good. The building's, the roof is gone, so.
Are you starting right away, is that the plan?
That's the plan, is we're tearing down the building right now. One, one other thing that we're working out is we're trying to find out what's going to be best for sewer, to get sewer back there, to get sewer and water back there for some bathrooms. And do we, it's very expensive to tie into the existing. We can do that, but then we're tearing up so much. So, we're, so we're out there with the excavator talking about tying into the existing building and making sure we have everything that could tie in.
Nice.
And you guys are a, a, a man short, Phil's gone, huh?
Yeah, I haven't heard updates on that hire.
One starts on Monday.
Is that right?
Oh, really?
We'll talk more about that.
Where'd they come from?
Trapper.
Trapper, oh, I thought that one said no.
He did, but then he.
Reconsidered?
Plus, it's a few more vacation days and.
Maybe not reconsidered.
Reconsidered, that's great.
Well, are we ready for a motion on this then?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the applicant's request for amended site plan approval to construct a two-story accessory building with the following conditions. One, the applicant will continue to work with the city engineer to make all final corrections to the engineering documents. Two, the plans will meet development specifications as found in the Linden City Development Manual. Three, final exterior material design is approved as proposed and will meet the architectural building requirements in all other aspects. Four, the applicant will comply with all bonding requirements if applicable. And five, a demolition permit will be obtained for existing accessory building. And six, the landscaping plan is approved as presented. And seven, all items on the staff report.
Second that motion?
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I did.
Okay.
Yep.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, okay, Scott, any opposed?
Then opposed.
I think that was an approval.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
Okay. All right, the voting is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, we'll.
Good luck.
Be neat to watch that change and improve and go up and.
Come play pickleball.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Yeah, have lacrosse practice in there and pickleball.
There you go.
You're welcome. Good luck to you.
Thanks.
Great job.
Oh, thanks.
She's awesome.
Well, thanks, she needs to hear that too. Okay, as far as following up, the only things we have left are planning commissioners' reports. And is there anything that any of you would like to bring up? Now, Renee, how much longer are you with us?
I told, Mike asked if I would send him an email on when I would conclude things. I was planning on through March.
Okay.
So, that's that. I haven't officially written him the email, but I will, I'm just kind of conferring with, you know, where we are with our home sale and all that, so.
I haven't seen a sign yet.
It hasn't come up yet. We've been in the middle of getting it ready to go on the market, so making some renovations.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you're mostly living in your other home.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? The only, I mentioned a few things for, to Mike in an email, did you receive that?
Yes.
And, and I'll let you go ahead with what you want to discuss on that. I just thought that the discussion with the, or the items on the agenda with the city council with the improvements with the horse arena construction, I thought those were interesting and might be interesting to you also. Also, there was a discussion on the Central Utah Water Requirements for landscaping and, and some funding involved with that. And then, then the only other things I had were, you know, the updates on the water installation and also any legislative updates. I know that a lot's been going on with that, so, and you probably had other things you wanted to bring up also.
Yeah, I, I can go through those items and we welcome Councilman Broderick.
I didn't even welcome you. I am so sorry. I, that was, that was my oversight. Thank you for being here.
We're happy to have his newest, one of his many assignments to the planning commission now, so. Yeah, maybe you can help me with the horse arena. I believe we received a grant for that. I haven't been involved a whole lot with it, I apologize, but.
Yes, we've been involved, some city funding as well, it's underway.
Yeah.
It's going on now. Pretty, pretty exciting stuff, I think, that's happening there. Linden still has a large horse-loving population and it could be a little more in compliance with normal sizes for rodeo-type arenas. So, we're pleased with how that's going. I think it was a fifty percent match.
So, are we going to see the drawings for the buildings or?
There's no buildings, they're just redoing the fencing, the arena.
So, you're talking fencing and seating and, or what?
Yes. It's just, it's mainly just fencing. And I, I, I don't know.
I think they're making it more of an oval shape where it was not really an oval. And then, I think they're redoing some of the chutes for the livestock, the grandstand area. I think one of the important upgrades is they're just pulling all that material that probably shouldn't have been in there in the first place and starting out with the right base material and bringing in the right kind of sand. I think that'll make a big difference in the usability of it.
The southeast portion was moved out because it was kind of narrow in there, almost pear-shaped. You had an aerial view, and so, that's moving out.
Renee, did notice in the discussion that what the original costs were thought to be, had to be increased and what.
That seems to be like.
Yeah, yeah, that just to be able to have it like it needed to be.
Yeah, you can see it there, how as it goes to the right, it just kind of narrows and so, that's being pushed out towards the bottom, towards the south.
So, it'd be a true oval.
Yep. Yeah, then like Jared said, they're redoing the chutes and things like that, so.
Negating around.
No, no improved seating or anything for spectators, just.
I don't think so, I think.
I'm trying to remember on that. Some of those things that would be done in phase has been added. But right now, you know, as we dig back into that hillside.
Yeah. That'll be nice.
So, can anybody use the arena at this point or do they have to make a reservation if you want to go take your horses down there?
It's always been open as far as I've ever been.
Okay.
Unless there's a city event.
If you had something that you absolutely, it'd probably be a good idea to.
You just reserve it through the rec center, right?
To reserve it, but I've never reserved it for our family if it's not being used.
You just go down there?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I've had several residents say, what are they doing down there? And, and mostly what I've said is just they're just making a lot of improvements.
Yeah, so we had a lot of input from the, the horse.
Community.
Crowd community, that's better, you know, to making sure of the things that.
Right.
That are appealing to them and make it more usable and functioning. So, I think it'll be a great addition.
Do we keep barrels and poles there if people want to put them out? If they wanted.
There's barrels usually there.
Yeah, so I was wondering, do we have?
They'll probably still be kicking around somewhere, yeah.
Can we go down and ride there?
Yeah, I use it.
Sometimes, yeah. Okay.
We just hope it won't be so dang nice that then we can't go use it when we want to because people from all over the valley are using it.
You don't want it to be too good.
Because it's worked for our uses, but I'm glad to see it be approved.
Like Pleasant Grove, can people go over there and use that anytime? The arena over there? I mean, I was wondering, who's the next one over that has one? P G has one certainly.
Yeah.
But do they have an open arena area or do you have to?
I don't know, I've never thought about.
You know, I've, I've seen people in there using it and practice roping clubs going over there and we.
Well, when the weather's good, but there's, you know, there's the North County and the South County equestrian areas people can use too. And those don't really require reservations unless you've got an event or something.
That sounds like if some proper chutes are going in here, somebody could actually.
Practice.
Bring some cats and rope out of there then, huh?
Um, the Central Utah Water Conservancy discussion point that Sharon brought up. So, the city is in, we receive over the years, number of grants. There's a couple of them that we're working on with, help me with this one, Van. One, we're looking at tying into North County, or I'm sorry, the North Union Canal tying into Murdoch Canal because we, we lose a wa, a lot of water in the North Union Canal. And so, we're looking at moving that up to the Murdoch Canal. And then also, what was the other grant that we were?
Part of it's in our secondary water meter installation and this guy just like, hey, we negotiated the deal and now you're changing it a little bit.
Who, who's changing it, the state or?
Central Utah.
Central Utah?
Yeah, so they want us to adopt a.
They're not reneging on any of the funds, are they?
No, but they want us to adopt a water-wise landscaping ordinance that would be required for commercial properties and then the front and side yards of single-family homes.
New construction.
New construction.
New construction.
Only thirty-five percent of the front yard can be like grass. And the rest have to be, and if you don't adopt it as a city, they won't give you.
Oh, brother.
Funding.
And so, we're going to be bringing that, a draft of that to you at your next planning commission meeting, so.
It doesn't sound to me like we'll have any choice, really, will we?
Not if we, we, we've received millions of dollars in grants from them over the years and, no, I mean.
Happens when we take the money. It's got strings to it, dude.
Yep.
But I, it's probably the right thing to do. The only thing that frustrates me is, you know, and probably maybe some of you have been frustrated by it as well, but just all the, the, the talk and the amount of money they're talking about, you know, expending on the Great Salt Lake. It's just the most asinine thing I've ever heard of. You know, I mean, the real problem, and I've never heard the real problem come up. The real problem up there, the only reason it's been getting sucked a lot drier than it ever did is because they, they don't have a commensurate per rainfall requirement on the big industry out there, like Morton Salt and the magnesium company. It doesn't matter if we're having a good rain year or a bad year, they're sucking millions of gallons of water out to evaporation ponds to keep their operations going, whether we got rainfall or not. But I guess the reason nobody wants to talk about the real problem is the state probably makes a lot of money on the salt and the magnesium that's going out of there.
What about Dougway?
I don't know if Dougway's.
That, I'd be.
The other guys are evaporating, purposely evaporating. And I, I mean, and that's never even, I've not even heard that come up, but that's really the problem.
That's their industry.
That's interesting.
Yeah. You know, and yet, people have the audacity to think we ought to spend a few billion dollars and pipe water in from the ocean. When we could solve our own problem.
Yeah, have the industry pay for that, if you need that water.
You know, and these industries aren't even local now anymore.
Nope, they're become.
Morton's now in Germany.
Right, they're global.
It's not like, you know, we need to bring the anvil down anyway.
Probably has some connection.
You don't want to get, I, I'm sorry.
Probably has something to do with the inland port.
Huh?
It probably has something to do with the inland port.
Yeah.
So, got to be vigilant on this stuff.
Well, that's interesting because I hadn't heard that perspective before.
But it makes sense.
It's not even discussed. And it's the real problem. They really look at doing stupid things that cost a lot of money.
But look at this rainfall year, it's like, okay.
Yeah, I hope, I hope this.
This can mitigate that for a while, put it on hold.
But we still need to follow through with the solution on the dry, the dry years, that we shouldn't be letting it just go out to the desert to be evaporated so they can continue to mine magnesium and salt to the degree they want to. But again, it's, this is politics, but anyway.
Last couple items on their water metering, for secondary water metering, that's ongoing. I don't know how many they've installed already, but it's, it's.
You know, they probably haven't installed near as many as they'd like to because we're having a real winter this year. But they've been out working on it.
Yeah, they're doing about twenty a day. They're on schedule, they're using those back trucks or whatever, so just putting something around. Yeah, they're doing about twenty a day, they're on schedule, they're using those back trucks or whatever, so just parting around. With the snow that they, we've had, that turns out to be a great way to do it, so they're.
They're, they're on schedule?
Yeah.
I, I got a tour of the, down at Public Works the other day and it looked like they've got their act together. I just didn't know how much the weather was playing into.
Yeah, it seems to not be affecting them too much. I'm sure they would love.
Yeah, I mean, there's days that, that have been bad enough, I haven't seen them out there, but they've been mostly in my neighborhood and they, they seem to really have a good act put together.
What's their, what's their target completion date?
I think this year, they were hoping to get a good part of the west of State Street done, but I don't know for sure, but I don't. I think it's gonna take a couple of years, isn't it?
No, I think it's done this year.
It's done, it gets done after the water goes out again in the fall, whatever, they don't get done before spring.
I think it's early fall, late summer, early fall, I think they're done.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm trying to remember.
They're not doing anything up here already, are they?
Yeah, I.
Aren't all the crews west of State?
On my main street.
Oh, have you? Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, they're moving right along, I think it's like forty districts this city's been divided into.
Yeah.
They're just moving east.
Well, they look.
Just took, took your desk, they were working hard around my house today, they were over on one fifty suctioning out some, some meters and they woke me up during my nap, so they are.
Spoken like a true retiree.
Well, yeah, it seems like they're, they got, they're real good.
The last item was just legislative updates, um, the, the only one that will, may affect us the most, um, as far as land use right now, they're re, they're re-codifying or re- rewriting the, how subdivisions, um, are approved. And so some cities do like a, a preliminary subdivision approval at the Planning Commission and then city council. They go back with final approval from Planning Commission and city council, they're trying to streamline the subdivision process. So I, I know there'll be some changes made to that. Um, I know in the past, they've, there's been talk about trying to get subdivisions out of the hands of the city council and just let Planning Commission do it, because city council's more legislative, the Planning Commission's more administrative. And so I, I don't know where they'll end up with that, but I know they are working on some subdivision changes. Doesn't change your lot size or anything, it's just processes for subdivisions.
Why do they have to tell each city what to do? Okay, I mean, that's something.
Because you have fifty percent of the legislators are developers.
Okay.
So.
People, pay attention, I know.
So.
One of the things.
M Y O B, mind your own business.
One of the things that I thought was interesting in the paper was, um, there was an article, I think it was in Sunday's paper about um, a lot of this, or some cities are making loans available um, through the city for, you know, first-time home buyers or lower-income home buyers to be able to get into the homes. And then those are repaid back when the person sells the home.
Usually if you don't live them, live in them for a certain amount of time.
Right.
Yeah, then I know the governor, no, it was the Stewart Adams, the president of the senate, I think he was proposing twenty million for first-time home buyers as well.
I heard that was for new construction under four hundred and fifty thousand.
Only, yep.
Right.
Which is probably a town hall.
A variation to the Utah housing, Utah housing monies.
I don't know all the details, I just heard some, something along those lines.
That was interesting and, um, and I guess one of the reasons that interested me, and this is trivia, but when we were, um, we had bought our first home and it was out on Ironton Hill. And after about six years, we wanted to sell that home, well, interest rates, that was when interest rates just skyrocketed.
Double digit.
They're, they're nothing compared to what they were at that time. And we thought, gee, we're never gonna, we're never gonna be able to sell this home, and at that time, they came out with, and we thought this was a terrific deal, nine and a quarter percent interest loans for first-time home buyers and, and that's how we sold that home. But when you've got interest rates going up to fifteen, sixteen, seventeen percent.
Doesn't even, even begin to appreciate, I mean, in, that in my career, I, I, I built for thirty years and the rate was never better than eight percent the whole time I was building, I mean, that was a good rate, that was eight percent.
But I thought it was interesting that they were talking about some, some state.
Yeah.
Monies to help with that, and that.
Well, and they did, they did before, that's when they created the Utah Housing, you know, programs and stuff like that to, to, and which were better deals usually than FHA or anything else, but they were limited funds each time they released them. There was a, you know, a certain amount, and once they were gone, they were gone till the next legislature basically allocated.
And that's exactly what happened at that time. Anyway.
So the only two items I have just for next Planning Commission is we'll be bringing you, like I said, the draft for the Waterwise Landscape Ordinance. And then we'll also be bringing you the site plan approval for the Kia dealership, so that'll go just north of Home Depot.
Okay.
Very good.
So.
Sounds great.
Boy, we'll really be rolling in it then. We got, between Hyundai and Kia, we'll have the two, we'll have the two hottest cars out on the market being sold in Linden, that's.
That's great.
Yep, that was a, that was a good steal from American Fork.
And don't we have Lexus too?
Yeah, but they don't go through near the inventory.
Hyundai's bringing in, uh.
Their Genesis.
Their Genesis line too.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, I worry about, cause I, I use Lexus down there, I worry about them and I asked the guy, was getting an oil change and a, and emissions check this week or last week, and I said, hey, I don't gotta worry about you guys, do you? And he says, you know what? We're just, everything we're selling, it's just, they come in, sit down, we order it, and so that's why we're not flooring.
Yeah, there's not, cause you think, you think that, cause you see a lot of the.
Me worry that, hey, you guys doing okay?
The lots looks empty, but really people are ordering in advance, they're not buying off the lot as much.
Yeah, their model is to do it that way.
Yeah.
And it makes sense if you sell off cars.
So if there's.
Well, then they get what they want and it's ordered and.
Yeah.
Interesting.
So our next meetings are the fourteenth and twenty-eight.
Correct.
Okay.
Mike?
Yes.
Is there any, is there any interest in seven hundred corridor, did that, did that help fit the center, spur anything else that were, are people contacting the city about those properties along seven hundred?
Um, one of the other properties closed, I think it was the one for the, uh, corporate headquarters, but we haven't heard from them since. They purchased the property, but we haven't heard from them. Um, I think the developer that had the property under contract from Ron Anderson, I believe their contract has expired, um, and so, I mean, we're constantly promoting that area, but the, the one, the gym hasn't spurred itself any new development.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are we ready to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One hour, you guys.
Well done, Sharon, well done.